Call to order the regular meeting of the Calhoun Parish Police Jury for Thursday, June 1, 2023. I ask that you take a moment and silence your cellphones. If there's any item on tonight's agenda that you wish to speak, please fill out a blue slip you'll find there at the front of the room and turn it in to anyone here at the staff desk. We'll have the invocation and pledge of allegiance by Mr. Andrew Pont. Please stand.
Let us pray. Heavenly Fathers, we gather here this evening. We pause to give you thanks and praise for the many blessings that you've given us. We ask your blessing upon everyone here this evening and upon our families. We pray for our nation's leaders, that their decisions be pleasing in your sight and that your Holy Spirit guide them. We ask that you keep us strong in faith and persevering in prayer, diligent in our work, and generous towards those in need. And we ask all of these favors in your Son's name, Jesus Christ our Lord and Redeemer. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Andrew Pont.
Sir.
Roll call, Madam Secretary.
Yes, sir. Mr. Abshar?
Here.
Mr. Andrew Pont?
Here.
Mr. Barris?
Here.
Mr. Barti?
Here.
Vice President Brain?
Here.
Mr. Burley?
Here.
Mr. Gilery?
Here.
Mr. Hayes?
Here.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. Markentell?
Here.
Mr. Richard?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Stelly was unable to attend this evening. Mr. Tremonti?
Here.
And President Landry?
Here.
You do have a court.
Thank you, Ms. Kathy.
You're welcome.
One A, Presentation of Certificate to Mr. James Landrenault, coach of the McNeese State University softball team, in recognition of winning the 2023 Southland Conference Championship. Mr. Hayes. Coach? Those of you who don't know, Coach Landrenault is coach of the women's basket -- oh, basket. The women's basket.
You're right.
Women's softball team at McNeese State University. He's kind enough to be here. Yeah, really. Really. And he brought a couple of athletes with him. And I want to start off by reading his accomplishments. You know, a lot of times the coaches take it for granted. They always talk about the athletes and the wonderful years they've had and how many games they won and da-da-da-da-da, which is all justified. What they don't talk about a whole lot is what the coach did and the burden that he bore to get these young ladies to the top. Coach Landrenault guided McNeese to a school record 47 wins. It was the fourth 40th win season under him, third Southland Conference regular season title, and second consecutive title, fifth Southland Conference tournament title, three -peat as Southland Conference tournament champs from 2021 to 2023, sixth overall postseason appearance, fifth NCAA tournament appearance, led McNeese to its second straight NCAA tournament, regional championship game, picked up his 250th career win on May 5 with a 4-0 win over Houston Christian, has a career record of 258 and 155 for a winning percentage of 625, has a Southland Conference record of 118 wins, 38 losses, has a 19-2 Southland Conference tournament record, gone undefeated in the tournament in the last three years, 10-0. His 258 wins ranks him ninth in total victories among Southland Conference coaches, ranks him second among current Southland Conference coaches. His 625 overall winning percentage ranks him fifth overall in Southland Conference coaches' history, but it's the best winning percentage among active coaches. He has 118 conference wins, which ranks him 11th overall and second among active coaches, and his 756% Southland Conference winning percentage ranks him third overall, but is the best among active coaches. Coach Landrenault has been a privilege to know at McNeese. He's a class act. He's a real pro. He knows what he's doing, and he continues to do it. Coach, I'll let you come on up and introduce the young ladies you brought with you, who are the backbone of the Cowgirls.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate it. Ron, kind words, as always, but you know, as a coach, we're very -- we understand we don't play games. Players do. And I've been blessed over my career to have great players and great coaching staffs that surround me. I never want to take that for granted, never want that to get overshadowed of -- there's a lot of people that pay the price to get to, you know, have some success. And hopefully, our community's been able to enjoy it a little bit. Hopefully, we get -- we give you something to be proud of. And because we talk about it. We talk about making our community proud. We talk about doing the right things and representing the community in the right way. And we know we're going to have to overcome adversity, but getting the text messages and getting the support. And, but you know, this year's come with both, and we welcome it as we grow forward. And, but you know, today, I'll start off with my assistant coach, my associate head coach handles the brunt of things for me. She doesn't get enough credit. Her name's not in the spotlight enough, but I couldn't have done it without her. And you know, at McNeese, one thing I've had, you know, it's -- longevity is something that's hard to come by sometimes. And Coach Shelley's getting her fifth season, so I don't think we've had many coaches -- head coaches last that long, so we appreciate Shelley Landry.
Right on the side over is a sophomore, our center fielder. She had a great year for us this year, started almost every single game. Definitely, you know, grew up right here. Went to Sam Houston High School. And we're lucky to have her. She's a great leader on our program, and that's Aaron Ordman. And next to her, sometimes we refer to her as number five, but her name is Whitney Tate. She's been outstanding pitcher for her. She's been an excellent role model for our younger players, a 4-0 student. She just graduated. Trying to get her back for one more year. But of course, who wouldn't want her back, right? She had big wins, her career. And the thing about Whitney that she loved to watch is the bigger the game, the better she is. She loves to be in the moment. She loves to lead her team, and you can't ever tell adversity strikes her. And that's, one more time, Whitney Tate.
And so, look, the one thing is Whitney talks about this a lot, playing for something bigger yourself. And sometimes we get caught up in our small circle, our small bubble. But when you actually see -- and so I always talk to our players, hey, can we give them hope? Five years ago, when I'd sit down and I'd talk to, you know, on a radio show or something, I'd talk about winning a regional, and they would automatically go to the next thing. They wouldn't want to talk about it. No one believed. And no one believes until you get there. We didn't win the regional. We didn't. But we gave it a hell of a try. We gave it a hell of a run. And we showed that we do belong on the big stage. Our kids handle it great class, but more importantly, it shows it's about the people. And that's where our community is. It's about the people. It's not, you know, Mr. Navoy used to always tell me, it's not about the horse, it's not about the barns, the horses inside. And we have good people in our program. We represent good people, and we hope we make you guys proud. We'll keep doing our best. As always, go Pokes.
Coach, if we can present a little memento to you and the team. Mr. Landrenault, you'll come forward. Certificate of recognition presented by the Calhoun Parish Police Jury on this first day of June 2023 to James Landrenault, head coach of the McNeese State University for leading the softball team to 2023 Southland Conference Championship for the third time, and for guiding McNeese to a regional final for the second consecutive season. Congratulations on your accomplishments and on a job well done. He brought them to within one strike of qualifying for the College World Series. One stinking strike. Remember that. They certainly will. Come on up. Coach?
Congratulations.
Thank you. Good job, guys. Good job. Item 1D, Presentation of Certificates to members of the St. Louis Catholic High School Boys Golf Team in recognition of winning the 2023 Louisiana High School Athletic Association Division II State Championship. Mr. Abshar.
Thank you, sir. So the Boys Golf Team, they shot school records, even par for 288 in first round, and 11 over par for 587 two-day total, defeating second place St. Thomas More by 13 strokes. Senior class won two state championships and one runner-up. The athletes are, led by Coach Sid Briscoe, Colin Atchie, Ross Anderson, Samuel Broussard, Kai Hanks, Cameron Langley, Jonathan Perry, and George Trape.
Mr. Vice President?
Yes, sir.
I've seen the Hanks boys play, and they're going to be winning some more state championships to come. Congratulations, big guy. Congratulations. Good job, guys. Good job. Item 1D, Presentation of Certificates to members of the St. Louis Catholic High School Boys Track and Field Team in recognition of winning the 2023 Louisiana High School Athletic Association Class 3A State Championship. Mr. Abshar.
Thank you, sir. So the Boys Golf Team, they shot school records, even par for 288 in first round, and 11 over par for 587 two-day total, defeating second place St. Thomas More by 13 strokes. Senior class won two state championships and one runner-up. The athletes are, led by Coach Sid Briscoe, Colin Atchie, Ross Anderson, Samuel Broussard, Kai Hanks, Cameron Langley, Jonathan Perry, and George Trape.
Mr. Vice President?
Yes, sir.
I've seen the Hanks boys play, and they're going to be winning some more state championships to come. Congratulations, big guy. Congratulations. Good job, guys. Good job. Item 1D, Presentation of Certificates to members of the St. Louis Catholic High School Boys Track and Field Team in recognition of winning the 2023 Louisiana High School Athletic Association Class 3A State Championship. Mr. Abshar.
Thank you, sir. So the Boys Golf Team, they shot school records, even par for 288 in first round, and 11 over par for 587 two-day total, defeating second place St. Thomas More by 13 strokes. Senior class won two state championships and one runner-up. The athletes are, led by Coach Sid Briscoe, Colin Atchie, Ross Anderson, Samuel Broussard, Kai Hanks, Cameron Langley, Jonathan Perry, and George Trape.
Mr. Vice President?
Yes, sir.
I've seen the Hanks boys play, and they're going to be winning some more state championships to come. Congratulations, big guy. Congratulations. Good job, guys. Good job. Item 1D, Presentation of Certificates to members of the St. Louis Catholic High School Boys Track and Field Team in recognition of winning the 2023 Louisiana High School Athletic Association Class 3A State Championship. Mr. Abshar.
Thank you, sir. So the Boys Golf Team, they shot school records, even par for 288 in first round, and 11 over par for 587 two-day total, defeating second place St. Thomas More by 13 strokes. Senior class won two state championships and one runner-up. The athletes are, led by Coach Sid Briscoe, Colin Atchie, Ross Anderson, Samuel Broussard, Kai Hanks, Cameron Langley, Jonathan Perry, and George Trape.
Mr. Vice President?
Yes, sir.
I've seen the Hanks boys play, and they're going to be winning some more state championships to come. Congratulations, big guy. Congratulations. Good job, guys. Good job. Item 1D, Presentation of Certificates to members of the St. Louis Catholic High School Boys Track and Field Team in recognition of winning the 2023 Louisiana High School Athletic Association Class 3A State Championship. Mr. Abshar.
Thank you, sir. So I'm going to start with Boys. And there's only one Boy, who just happens to be my son, Mason Abshar. Unfortunately, the Boys Track Team doesn't have enough Boys Track members that compete at the state level. But he's lucky enough that he's a pole vaulter, and he was able to win his second consecutive outdoor title and his fourth overall state championship. So pole vault champion for Louisiana, Mason Abshar. The Girls Outdoor Track and Field, coached by the one and only Johnny Giordano, who you might catch on the cover of The Long Yop this week. The Girls won their third consecutive championship, scored 106.5 points, outpointing second place Lake Charles Charter -- Lake Charles College Prep by 62.5 points, more than double any other team. Athletes are Sophia Bergen, Hannah Bouillon, Ella Butler, Elizabeth Buttrus, Mary Claire Groves, Sidney Gwynn, Haley Jackson, Charlie Mays, Mia Medlin, Addison Marino, Natalie Bluta, Cecilia Byrne, Kylie Poussin, Cassidy Richard, Ella Segura, Kendall Touche, Kenzie Touche, Brylee Williams. I'm sorry. Gabby Link, Grace Link, Madeline Elliott, Kendall Goodwin, Riley Keating, Emma Roach, Sonny Woodcock, and Parker Anderson.
Might have to double up.
If y'all want to make two rows, that'd be nice.
All right, look right here. One, two, three.
You should be in good shape.
Good job.
Take after them Lake Charles High School Track Teams, I mean.
I talked to him the other day.
Yeah, yeah. I'm a softball high school boy.
Good job.
I just wanted to go ahead and add, seniors in these sports won eight championships out of nine possible and one runner-up, including indoor track. They won 11 of 13 possible state titles. So amazing effort by these students. So congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes and Mr. Abshar. 2A, Adopted Resolutions Approving Act of Donation Agreements for the Holly Road Cul-de-sac as part of the miscellaneous roadway improvements of various roads. I have a motion by Mr. Richard, second by Mr. Markentell. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 3A, Approve the Minutes of the Regular Meeting of Police Jury dated May 4, 2023. Got a motion by Mr. Burley, second by Mr. Barti. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 3B, Approve the Budget Committee Report dated June 1, 2023. Mr. Barti.
The Budget Committee of the Police Jury met at 5:15 PM today, June 1. It recommends the following items be approved. 1. Ward 1, $150,000 water work district number 1 of Ward 1 for costs associated with the mass -- with the meter replacement project phase 2. Number 2. Ward 7, $48,280, Ward 7 Fire Protection District number 1 for costs associated with the purchase of firefighting gear. 3. Economic Development, $20,000 Community Center and Playground District number 2 of Ward 4 SPARs for costs associated with the LHSAA State Softball Championship. Number 4. Economic Development, $25,000 Community Center and Playground District number 2 of Ward 4 SPARs for costs associated with the LHSAA State Baseball Championship. Number 5. Economic Development, $25,000 Louisiana High School Rodeo Association for costs associated with the state high school and junior high school rodeo. The Committee also recommends that the Police Jury adopt a resolution amending the fiscal year 2023 budget deviations in accordance with LA RS 391310. This is the end of my report, Mr. President, and I move as recommended by the Committee.
Thank you, Chairman Barti. I have a motion by Chairman Barti, a second by Mr. Barris. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 3C, Adopt the Resolution Approving the Proposed Budget for the Operation of the Southwest Louisiana Crime Lab for Fiscal Year 2023-2024. Have a motion by Mr. Markentell, second by Mr. Hayes. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 3D, Adopt the Resolution Approving an Amendment to the Cooperative Endeavor Agreement between the Police Jury and Dr. Terry Welke, Calhoun Parish Coroner. Motion by Mr. Burley, a second by Mr. Barti. Is there any discussion? Mr. Andrew Pont? On this particular amendment, which sum up with the changes, who's going to be the outside providers for these services?
President, I'll answer that, and then Kelly may have, depending on the question, may need to provide an answer. Just back up a little, Mr. Andrew Pont. So as a reminder, the Police Jury has two agreements with the coroner, Dr. Welke. One, with the part he's retiring from is the forensic side. The other part is more traditional coroner duties. So the contracting out will be strictly for full-body autopsies, which he will still do what are called external examination services, but they're not full-on autopsies. Typically, it is a group out of Lafayette that they've used before, by the way. This is not new. And there are others in the state, but that's the one they use most commonly. I don't know, Kelly, you may help me with how many roughly per year that have been done. It's gone down quite a bit, so it's not maybe as much as contracting out as you might think. Do you have an answer on that?
The number of autopsies are relatively small. You know, you're talking maybe 30 to 40, depending on the circumstances that are the parish and the municipalities.
So with the new facility that's underway that we're building, when that is complete, do we anticipate bringing back and having autopsies done here instead of having to go elsewhere for these to be done?
Because it's a very timely question. The -- our answer is, we absolutely want autopsies to be done there. And we will have state-of-the-art facilities for that. It's coincidental, I don't know if it's coincidental, coroners are elected, and the -- per state law, it's the same this fall with, as are jurors, legislators, sheriffs, same thing. So our goal, probably at that time, with the new term, is to try to either have somebody, I think ideally, this is my opinion, we would try to have somebody full-time there, but it is a very -- it's a rare profession. That may not be the right word. It's hard to find them.
Right.
And so, but I think, I think to maybe get to your point, the hope is that even if it's a contracted service, we will use that facility, because it's so much better than having things done. You literally, you can imagine, I don't want to get too much into details, things have to be shipped back and forth.
Right.
So yes, our -- that's our hope, is ideally, and we find somebody who could do it. We do believe we're going to need that facility to attract somebody.
Yes.
Which so --
I agree.
Applaud the jury for, I know y'all want that, want that to be built for a long time, and it should turn out well with the timing.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Andrew Pont. Is there any further discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 4A, Approve Applications for Liquor and Beer Permits. Mr. Crane and his staff recommends that two new applications be approved. Have a motion by Mr. Abshar, a second by Mr. Lewis. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Do we have a maintenance thing going on back here? 4B, Adopting Ordnance Rescinding Ordnance Number 7506 Due to the Adjudicated Property Being Redeemed. Have a motion by Mr. Markentell, a second by Mr. Richard. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Should we reassess the -- maybe they don't know a meeting going on here.
I'm sorry, Mr. President. I apologize for that, but it's the air handling duct system. We thought it was fixed. Not quite sure what's going on.
They are moving outside, working on it as we speak.
Oh, if we can hear them, yes. I mean, I'm glad. We can't complain the air conditioner's out, now can we? We'll just move on. 4C, Adopt Ordnances Rescinding the Following Ordnances With Respect to the Following Adjudicated Properties. Number 1, Ordnance Number 7392. Number 2, Ordnance 7396. Number 3, Ordnance Number 7398. And number 4, Ordnance Number 7401. Have a motion by Mr. Tremonti and a second by Mr. Markentell on all bullets. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 4D, Adopt an Ordnance Approving the Sale of Adjudicated Property Located at 1401 Summit Street in Lake Charles, Ward 3, to Wesley Citizen in the amount of $6,650. Have a motion by Mr. Gilery, a second by Mr. Richard. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 5B, Adopt a Resolution Approving a Cost Reimbursement Agreement between the Police Jury and the Louisiana Department of Children and Family Services for participation in the Supplemental Nutrition Assistant Program, known as SNAP. Have a motion by Mr. Gilery, a second by Mr. Barti. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Move on 6A. 6A, Approve Payment to All Current Invoices. Have a motion by Mr. Andrew Pont and a second by Mr. Burley. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 6B, Adopt a Resolution on Proposals Received for Project Management Software. After review of the responsive proposals, staff recommends PM Web Inc. be selected as the software provider, subject to contractual negotiations, and 2B, awarded the contract after negotiations are completed. I have a motion by Mr. Burley, a second by Mr. Brain. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 6C, Adopt a Resolution on Proposals for the Official Journal. Staff recommends a proposal of the American Press in the amount of $6 per inch per insertion date be accepted for a one-year period beginning July 1, 2023. Have a motion by Mr. Markentell, a second by Mr. Richard. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 40 years ago, that would have been a fight. And it was, more than once. 6D, Adopt a Resolution Accepting Outer Road Bridge Replacement Project as Substantially Complete. Is there any discussion? Well, hold on, we need a motion in a second. Got a motion by --
We do believe we're gonna need that facility to attract somebody.
Yes.
Which so.
I agree.
Applaud the jury for, I know y'all want that, want that to be built for a long time and it should turn out well with the timing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Andrew Pont. Is there any further discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 4A, approve applications for liquor and beer permits. Mr. Crane and his staff recommends that two new applications be approved. Have a motion by Mr. Abshar, second by Mr. Lewis. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Do we have a maintenance thing going on back here? 4B, adopt an ordinance rescinding ordinance number 7506 due to the adjudicated property being redeemed. Have a motion by Mr. Markantel, second by Mr. Richard. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Should we reassess a minute? Maybe they don't know a minute.
I'm sorry, Mr. President. I apologize for that, but it's the air handling duct system. We thought it was fixed, not quite sure what's going on.
They are moving outside, working on it as we speak.
Oh, if we can hear them, yes. I mean, I'm glad. We can't complain the air conditioner's out, now can we? We'll just move on. 4C, adopt ordinances rescinding the following ordinances with respect to the following adjudicated properties. Number 1, ordinance number 7392. Number 2, ordinance 7396. Number 3, ordinance number 7398. And number 4, ordinance number 7401. Have a motion by Mr. Tremonti and a second by Mr. Markantel on all bullets. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 4D, adopt an ordinance approving the sale of adjudicated property located at 1401 Summit Street in Lake Charles, Ward 3, to Wesley Citizen in the amount of $6,650. Have a motion by Mr. Gilery, second by Mr. Richard. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 5A, adopt the resolution approving the submittal of a grant application to the Louisiana Housing Corporation for $125,000 for the rapid rehousing program. Have a motion by Mr. Gilery, second by Mr. Smith. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 5B, adopt the resolution approving a cost reimbursement agreement between the police jury and the Louisiana Department of Children and Family Services for participation in the Supplemental Nutrition Assistant Program known as SNAP. Have a motion by Mr. Gilery, second by Mr. Barti. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries.
Move on 6A.
6A, approve payment of all current invoices. Have a motion by Mr. Andrew Pont and a second by Mr. Burley. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 6B, adopt the resolution on proposals received for project management software. After review of the responsive proposals, staff recommends PM Web Inc. be selected as the software provider subject to contractual negotiations and to be awarded the contract after negotiations are completed. I have a motion by Mr. Burley, a second by Mr. Brain. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 6C, adopt the resolution on proposals for the official journal. Staff recommends a proposal of the American Press and the amount of $6 per inch per insertion date be accepted for a one-year period beginning July 1, 2023. Have a motion by Mr. Markantel, second by Mr. Richard. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Forty years ago, that would have been a fight. And it was more than once. 6D, adopt a resolution accepting outer road bridge replacement project as substantially complete. Is there any discussion? Well, hold on, we need a motion in a second. Got a motion by Mr. Barti, but we have a second somewhere. And Mr. Burley. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Adopt a resolution accepting the Fondo Library Hurricane Repair Project as substantially complete. Have a motion by Mr. Hayes, second by anyone? Mr. Barti? Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 7A, Community Center and Playground District number 4, Ward 1. Mr. Robert Bobby Boom has resigned.
I move that we accept the appointment of Mr. William Summers.
And we have a motion by Mr. Richard to appoint Mr. William Bill Summers and a second by Mr. Smith. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 7B, Consolidated Gravity Drainage District number 1, appointments. I have a motion by Mr. Richard to defer for 30 days on all members and a second by Mr. Gilery. Mr. Bears.
I move that we defer for 90 days. We got a little more housekeeping we need to do over on the west side, so I make a motion to defer 90 days.
Mr. Gab, is that gonna cause a problem?
Well, right now, you've got, the first motion was a motion to defer. Technically, I believe the next motion would be a motion to amend that motion to make it 90 days. So if Mr. Bears has a motion to defer for 90 days, if he has a second on that.
Well, we'll fix that. I'm talking about, is there a problem deferring this for 90 more days or are we gonna run into other issues? Mr. Galan is saying that it should be fine.
It, it's, it's fine. The statute, and somebody here could correct me if I'm wrong on this one, but I believe the statute says that the members will serve until you, has appointed somebody else, so you can defer it.
Okay. I just didn't want to have an issue down the road. So who made the original motion?
We got a secondary amendment. A secondary, a secondary amendment.
Who made the original motion?
Yeah.
Mr. Richard.
Mr. Richard, just withdraw your motion, please.
I withdraw the motion.
There you go. We just got it to be very good. And the second, and now we're just gonna start over. So now, we have a motion by Mr. Bears to defer for 90 days, Mr. Bears, and a second by Mr. Andrew Pont. Everybody's good? All right. Any further discussion? Any objections?
I move we defer for 90 days on 7C.
Motion carries. Yeah, you might have a problem on that.
You don't want to. We don't have no problems with that side.
I don't know if anybody's going to fight on.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Brain to defer for 30 days.
I'll second the 7C.
And a second by Mr. Richard. Is there any further discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 7D, Recreation District number 1 of Ward 4.
Move to reappoint Mr. Timothy Newsom.
Reappoint Mr. Timothy Newsom. I have a motion by Mr. Burley and a second by Mr. Andrew Pont. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 7E, Ward 6 Fire Protection District number 1. We have Ms. Brenda, the resignation of Ms. Brenda Vijay. And Mr. Markantel, you want to appoint Ms. Sarah McDaniel?
Yes.
Do we have a second?
Burley.
A second by Mr. Burley. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 7E 2, we have the resignation of Mr. Rodrick Williams. And Mr. Markantel, are you wanting to appoint Mr. Charlie Jones?
Yes.
We have a motion by Mr. Markantel, second by Mr. Tremonti. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 7F, Water Works District number 8 of Wards 3 and 8. We have a motion by Mr. Gilery to reappoint Mr. Bernard Habitz and a second by Mr. Brain. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 7G, Workforce Development Board. I need a motion to appoint, a reappoint as noted on the agenda. We're gonna just make one motion?
On bullets?
On bullets, as it's stated on the agenda, and the motion is by Mr. Smith and second by Mr. Richard. Is there any objections? Or any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Number 8 is an advise item. If you would, just look over that and make sure that any of those are your appointments.
Move to adjourn.
There we go. That's what we're looking for.